Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Present.
Present. Counsel Chakoudas?
Present.
Present. Counsel Calucci?
Present.
Present. Counsel Field?
Present.
Present. Counsel Hogan?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present. Counsel Ozy?
Present.
Present. Counsel Net?
Present.
Present. Counsel Staubert?
Present.
Present. Counsel Walsh? Absent. Counsel Sear?
Present. I'll rise for a moment of silence, please.
Mr. President, can we keep in our thoughts and prayers the Umfree family, Linda Umfree, longtime Wood Three family?
President also Gene Matthews.
President also Darryl Lane.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Set the minutes from the June 11 meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Communications?
We have no communications.
Public hearings.
First public hearing is on the zone ordinance amending the table of dimensional regulations in the Washington Street District.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please come to the podium, state your name.
Hi, my name is Sarah Marshall. I'm the owner of Lucille Wine Market and I'm looking to start a specialty wine and beer store, exclusively wine and beer, with a restricted license proposed at the Washington Sagamore intersection.
Thank you. Anyone?
Would you like me to explain anything else, or?
If the council wants to hear anymore, they'll ask.
Okay, okay, great.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Counsel President?
Just to let you know that's not the, this is public hearing for Washington Street Zone Change. This isn't for that, so, okay? Yep. So we'll start over again. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. What is the wish of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubert?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh absent. Counsel Sear?
Yes.
Yes. Next public hearing is on an act authorizing the city of Lynn to grant an additional liquor license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Now you can come to the podium. Let's start all over again.
Okay, all over again.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Marshall. For some of you who do not know me, I just am here today, I'm a small independent business owner, just like a lot of you are yourself. I'm also a resident and a homeowner. And with the excitement that I've come to find with living in Lynn, investing in Lynn, I'm looking to do the same thing on a second layer and invest in an independent business within the area, within the downtown region of Lynn. To, my proposal that I'm here today is proposing the home petition rule to add a restricted beer and wine license to the city in order for me to operate a very particular, unique specialty wine and beer store, a particular store that only exists in the city of Boston, does not exist currently in the city of Lynn, and providing a service and amenity, as mentioned, that doesn't exist here with particular products and style of store, that will be very attractive to current, future residents of the Lynn community that we're really trying to attract with the residential units that are currently being built, in addition to attracting other business owners that have already started to come up. We have a couple of them in the room, Nest Forward, Nightshade Noodle Bar, Common Eats is another recent one, and being a part of this community, I believe in.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Scott Marshall. I'm actually a resident of 28 Emerald Road in Ahon. Although I'm not a resident of Lynn, I've done a lot of work within Lynn, created That's Entertainment Youth Players about 20 years ago. That's Entertainment Players upgraded Lynn Youth Theater Group. Also a restaurant professional and alcohol professional. Sarah comes with, just want to say, it is a very niche market, niche thing that she's providing. It is all high-end boutique wine that you can't find at any other liquor store. It's in no competition to other liquor stores that are already in the area as well, not looking to serve nips or anything along those lines. And she's internationally kind of recognized Sauvignon Eau. She's been in Wine Enthusiast and 14 years of experience in the restaurant retail industry. So her passion and professionalism that she provides is something that Lynn could really benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address.
Kelly Masada, Brookline, Massachusetts. Thank you. I'm here to talk in support of Sarah Marshall and her project, her new wine store. I am the CEO of a nonprofit in cybersecurity. And I'm also on the hunt for a house. And my husband and I are looking to Lynn as a place to move from Brookline. And one of the things that I look for in a community are places that we can go where we can have a unique experience. And as a nonprofit, I'm always looking for creative places to hold fundraisers. I'm excited about Sarah's wine boutique. I've known her for several years. I know her father in the cybersecurity field. And I would very much bring all of my friends up here to Lynn to not only go to her store, but to also attend events that she would hold there.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address.
Hi, everyone. How are you? I'm Soraya Kuchichi. I live at 13 Willow Street in Lynn, downtown. Resident here for a little over a decade, my husband and I. And I also own a real estate boutique on Monroe Street, Nest Forward. So first of all, I wanted to thank you all for your great work in the city. I know it's very underappreciated, but I appreciate it so much. A couple of points that I wanted to bring up, I know Sarah's business, we're not like saving lives here with a wine and beer specialty shop, but she brings a lot of talent and passion. And I think anytime someone wants to share their talent and passion with the community, we should all embrace that. I've been here in the neighborhood for about 12 years. I love it here so much. But one of my frustrations is that we don't have enough diversity in terms of economics with our retail. So I really would like to see more businesses like Sarah's that bring that economic diversity to our neighborhood. I think things are really out of whack right now. We have a lot of social services, which again, I know there's a great need for it. Lots of nonprofits, not enough tax base. So there's that. And then Omar, the owner of the building, developer, I'm not sure if he's here, but I have great respect for him. He did a fantastic job with that building. And I think that space really deserves something to match his hard work. And I believe that Sarah can bring that to the table. Also, it was brands. So what better thing to put in that store than also wine and beer with, I believe there's going to be like a side tasting room where folks can still do what they did when it was brands. I had one more point, but I can't remember what it is right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please come to the podium, state your name. Anyone who's in favor and wishing not to come to the podium, if you want, you can raise your hand, too, at this point. Okay, all right.
My name is Rachel Miller. I live on 170 Oxford Street. I'm opening a restaurant at 73 Exchange Street. I just wanted to mention that Lynn has put a lot of effort into the EDIC and its resources for people like us to have small businesses in areas like this. I believe that Sarah's business could be an asset to the community. There are plenty of us who would support this particular niche market, but also as a fellow hospitality professional, between the two of us, there's plenty more room to attract future business owners and female business owners, minority business owners, you know, so on and so forth from there. I believe in Sarah.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
The point that I forgot, people are not banging down the doors in downtown Lynn to rent commercial real estate space. It's not happening. So you have someone who's looking to make a huge, you are, and some others are, but it's not, it's not an easy thing. People are not lining up to do it. And so I think thumbs up to Sarah.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have to read this. Taryn told me. This is a motion to approve the home rule petition. Eight votes are needed. So what's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion.
I have a question. Thank you, Mr. President, from Ms. Marshall, and probably a follow-up from Attorney Markopolis or Attorney Lamanna. Ms. Marshall could come to the podium, please. Thank you. I'd want to just ask a quick question. I know that it's listed here as not to be drunk on the premise. I just want to hear clarification.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, I think that's a very important piece to clarify because while there have been some things sort of back and forth, I'd love to very put it down on the record what I intend for this license to be. It will be strictly a retail license where you can purchase only beer and wine. You cannot drink it on the premises. That's the very big difference between a retail and a restaurant, off-premise and off-premise, off versus on-premise license. I've looked into particularly what that entails. And one piece that I do want to clarify where I think a lot of these questions are coming up, so I've been mentioning tastings, right? So for me, in order to understand and appreciate specialty wine and beer, for some of you who may be only accustomed to drinking a certain kind, how do you know it? You have to taste it. In order to do that, it is completely legal and approved by the ABCC. Many liquor stores do it, particularly in the city of Lynn, all across Massachusetts, to do tastings to the general public. In order to do that, you are only allowed to pour one ounce. I think, as we all know, a can of beer, which is one beverage, is 12 ounces. Just to clarify, a drink of wine is five ounces. So to taste someone on an alcoholic beverage of anywhere from 13% ABV and lower at 1%, I think it's very clear this is not a drinking establishment. This is really a space where you can purchase products that you would get at some of these higher-end restaurants that, as of right now, you can't. So a great question, and I'm very happy to clarify that answer.
Yeah, can the law department just clarify that as well for us, for myself?
Yes, that is correct. So they'll be purchasing unopened wine and unopened cases of beer, and they'll be bringing it home to drink, but with the legal ability to have a tasting.
But with the discussion of social events as a tasting, this license where it says not to be drunk on premise, they're not extending what their license is permitting.
This would just be for tasting. So if someone wanted to have a social event, it would be trying different types of wine.
Thank you.
But not to be there all night.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Staubert?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just to differentiate the difference between this license, if it's granted, and the license of another, you know, a beer and wine license to a store that gets sold. And to some folks, it's considered an investment, and it's something that we see time and time again. You know, somebody retires, we just saw it with Tony LaFlorist that had one, they retired, they sold that license to another establishment. With this particular license, this license will not be able to be sold or transferred. Is that correct?
That is correct as written. So if Ms. Marshall ceases to operate, this would not be one that could go back in the market and be sold anywhere else. It's specific to this location and to this particular owner.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubert?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh absent. Counsel Sear?
Yes.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Next public hearing.
Congratulations.
Public hearing on the city's annual action plan, including the use of the Department of Housing and Urban Development appropriations for the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Grant, and the Emergency Solutions Grant.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. Counsel President and fellow counsel members, my name is Don Walker. I'm here tonight representing the Department of Community Development. And I'm asking the Lynn City Council to make a motion to authorize the mayor to submit the city of Lynn's fiscal year 2020 action plan to HUD. The action plan contains basically three entitlement grants. The first one is the Community Development Block Grant, which is funded at a level of about $2.4 million this year. And we propose allocating about $500,000 for housing activities, which will include housing grants and loans for rehab, affordable housing rehab, first-time home buyer assistance, and neighborhood stabilization. We're also proposing to allocate about $180,000 as a local match for continued improvements to Lynn Commons, which we've been funding over the past four years. In addition to that, we plan to allocate about $300,000 for 26 different public service agencies, and to allocate about $550,000 for economic development activities, which will include small business loans, the Small Business Assistance Center, a commercial facade grant, as well as infrastructure development improvements, which include things like sidewalk replacement, the installation of antique lighting, shade trees and waste receptacles, and so forth. The other grant is the home grant, and that is funded at a level of about $810,000 this year. And that can only be used for housing assistance activities. And again, it'll be used to fund housing rehab, grants and loans, neighborhood stabilization, nonprofit support, and also rental assistance. The third grant is the Emergency Solutions Grant, which is funded at $210,000 this year. And that grant can only be used to provide services to the homeless and those at risk of becoming homeless. So we're proposing to allocate some of the funding for operational expenses associated with overseeing the Lynn Multi-Service Center. We're also proposing funding for the Lynn Shelter Association's Day Program, which is for homeless adults, as well as to provide some funding to the Haven Program, which provides a drop-in center for homeless youth. Lastly, we'd like to allocate some funding to Lynn Housing Authority Development Group for rental assistance.
Thank you, Donnie. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubert?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh absent. Counsel Sear?
Yes.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Petition of Erica Sanabria, owner of El Tico Restaurant, to operate a restaurant with a common eviction license, 47 to 50 seats, at 70 Commercial Street. Hours of operation will be Monday through Sunday, 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Mr. President, the three who sit, members of the council, Attorney Sam Vitale. Seated here in the first row is Erica, who is a young woman who invested in the city, established a business on Summer Street, wishes to expand to a new location at 70 Commercial Street. It's a food establishment. It has to be licensed. That location had previously been used, I believe, for a series of convenience stores, a dollar store. But a food establishment requires city council consent. So Erica, who's experienced in this business, is hopeful that you'll give approval and let her begin this new opportunity on Commercial Street. Also, I note that the landlords here, the building owner Peggy Pratt, who's a property owner here within the city of Lynn, Erica met with Counsel Hogan, and I think that she satisfied him with her answers. And if you have other questions or there's other information you need, I'd be glad to provide it.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Hogan?
Yes. I went out and I spoke to Erica, and I went to her present resident restaurant that is in business now, and she'll be moving over two stores down. And she runs a very good business, and I think it'll be a great business for this location on the corner of our Summer Street and our Commercial Street. So I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubert?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh absent. Counsel Sear?
Yes. Next public hearing.
Next public hearing is a petition of Jeffrey Gardett, 39 Phillips Road in Ahon, owner of Tailor Made Dog Care LLC, to operate an overnight boarding facility for more than four dogs at 71 Linden Street. Hours of operation, 24 hours, seven days per week.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
I would. My name is Jeff Gardett. I'm owner of Tailor Made Dog Care. First, congratulations to you, Sarah, and your team, and you as well, for your approval. I thank you to the council for taking my cause leading up to this moment and for the support you've given me. We were at a zoning board of appeals hearing a few weeks ago. We were fortunate enough to be granting that appeal. And I'm here before you today seeking a special permit to operate a business that is presently in business as a dog care, and as stated, I can presently board four dogs or less. I'm seeking permission, a special variance to seek more than four dogs. Hopefully, my business gets to the point where it supports that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Seeing none?
My name's Tom Tester. I'm a resident of Mariana Street for 12 years now. I own my own home. I did a lot of construction work with Jeffrey Gardett. I've known him for about 10 years now, and I still choose to be his friend. And I actually hung up my tool pouch, and now I'm working with him full-time. It's been a very rewarding job. The dogs are great, and I never thought I would do anything other than frame houses, but I'm here beside him. I'm his manager, and I love my job. Every day I get up now and I want to go to work versus dogs that ran in and out. You know, it doesn't matter to me anymore. So I just want to say that, and I think he's doing a very well job. I would be here to support him if I didn't believe in him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. It's usually Counsel Walsh's wad, but he's not here tonight. So he's asked Counsel Hogan to step in for him.
Yes, I have a letter here from Counsel Walsh. Before I read it, I just want to say, I've visited the location a couple of times with Counsel Walsh, and it's, it looks like it's going to be a very good business for Lynn. It's going to serve a need to certain people. And the access to the facility is in the front of the building, not around any residents. So I think Mr. Gardett has done a great job with the location, and it looks like it's going to be a great business. And here's a letter from Counsel Walsh. Counsel Walsh supports this petition. He said that although this address is Linden Street, the door is on Summer Street, and he has not received any complaints or concerns from neighbors. Counsel Walsh said it is primarily commercial in this area, and he feels that this is a good spot for Tailor Made Dog Care. And I make the motion on behalf of Counsel Walsh, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubert?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh absent. Counsel Sear?
Yes. Next public hearing.
Public hearing is a petition of Roxana Villanueva, 37 Chaucer Street, Boston, owner of Milan Towing Corporation, to operate a towing business with three trucks and a fenced-in property at 37 Bennett Street. Hours of operation, 24 hours, seven days per week.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. What is the wish of the council? Counsel Hogan?
I'd like to make a motion to table. I want to get to go out to the location and take a better look at it. So we're going to table this.
Motion made to table, non-debatable, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubert?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh absent. Counsel Sear?
Yes. Before we go on, Counsel Attorney Lamanna, could you please come to the podium? Appears we had a public hearing and we shouldn't have.
The planning board tonight tabled the hearing on this zone change. And the council cannot take action until the zoning board issues a recommendation for yes or no in favor of the proposal. So the proper motion here would be a motion for reconsideration and wait to such time as the planning board issues their recommendation.
So we need someone to make a motion to reconsider the vote. To reconsider the vote. Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubert?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh absent. Counsel Sear?
Yes. Counsel Ozy? Okay, now I would like to make a motion to table this. Motion to table, seconded, non-debatable. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubert?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh absent. Counsel Sear?
Yes. Next public hearing.
Petition of Victoria Mora, owner of Vicky's Restaurant, to change a martial arts studio into a restaurant at 135 Essex Street. Hours of operation, Monday through Sunday, 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, President and Counsel. Members of the council. My name is Frances Martinez. I am the president and CEO of the North Shore Latino Business Loop, located at 33 Sutton Street. I am here to do the petition for Vicky to be able to move to 135 Essex Street. Right at the moment, she has a restaurant next door, and she wants to expand. She's been a member of the association, an active member, and she's always looking for advice and making sure that she does the right thing in order to run her business correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Frances. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Sergio Espinoza. I live on 24 Mount Vernon Street. I'm here in support of Vicky for the restaurant transition over to next door, which is 135 Essex Street. I'm actually her consultant. We're going to be working on hopefully the transition of moving over the business over to a location. Obviously, it's a larger location, so she's been doing really well in the business she currently has, and we're looking for a bit of a larger space. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Barton? I'm going to ask Counsel Barton to take the podium. It's my wad.
Counsel Sear?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Vicky's been, has had a restaurant for three years now in the wad. And even when there were a couple of little issues, she was willing to work with the neighbors over there. She does a pretty good job. The only thing I'm going to say, because this is a bigger location, is that I'm going to put a stipulation that the trash is picked up every day, okay? And the second stipulation is that I'd like to give it a three-month trial to stay open until mid- give it a three-month trial to stay open till midnight, to make sure there's no issues or problems, which will be for the entire summer. So that'll be, give us a pretty good indication how things are going there. At the end of the three months, if there's no problem, then the hours can stay till midnight. If there are, we'll knock them back to 11:00.
Motion's made with stipulations.
Second.
We have a second. Second. Any discussion? Any more discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubin?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh Absen. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes.
Public hearings will be set now.
We have the petition of National Grid to install a joint home pole on Barrett Court and install one wooden pole, down guy, anchor, and a pole to a pole guy in front of 17 Barrett Court. Petition of National Grid to begin on River Street to install conduit to sweep up pole 28 for primary 3PH risers to feed the new apartment building at 6 Needham's Landing Road. Petition of National Grid to install one joint home pole on River Street and a pole to be used as a primary 3PH risers to feed new apartment building at 6 Needham's Landing Road. Petition of National Grid to begin on Commercial Street installing six new manholes and 2,700 feet of conduits and trenching to circle out Carolyn Street, Day Street, and Harden Street. Conduits will continue north crossing the Limway towards the proposed new 19th Street Limway Associates.
What's the wish of the council?
Set them down.
Motion made, set them down. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Committees, utilities?
Unanimous for the committee with stipulation that they're coming back at the next meeting to see if we can move any of the transformers on the poles.
Okay. Thank Counsel Chakoudis. Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ours, the ayes have it. Ways and means, Counsel Net?
Yes, Mr. President. Our vote unanimously by the committee to accept and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. The clerk would read all the transfers, please.
Transfer the sum of $3,199.82 from the account of state election expense to the account of city clerk payroll to fund election personnel. Order that his honor, the mayor, is hereby authorized to execute the project funding agreement with the Massachusetts School Building Association for repairs to the projects at Lynn Vocational Technical Institute. Order that the mayor be authorized to execute all necessary documents, agreements, applications, and contracts of securing a park grant in the amount of $580,000 for the construction and design of improvements to the Lynn Commons, including refurbishing the restroom, 25 decorative lights, fountain repair, and installation of pavers. Further order that the city of Lynn shall allocate $580,000 in community development block grant funds for the Phase III of the Lynn Commons Restoration Project. A resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for the community program for improvements to the Lynn Common. Whereas, Lynn Common is by far a community-wide asset, and the preservation and improvements to this facility are a city priority, as evidenced in the most recent open space and recreation plan. And whereas, the origin of the Lynn Common is as old as the settlement of the city of Lynn itself. And whereas, the initial meeting of the Lynn Park Commissioners in the 1880s contained an order of business to acknowledge the city of Lynn's ownership of the Lynn Common for the passive and active recreational use of its ceteracy. And whereas, the Lynn Common is dedicated to park and recreation purposes under MGL Chapter 45, Section 3. And whereas, the Lynn Commons' ultimate restoration guided in principle by the master plan will greatly enhance this facility with improved infrastructure, path systems, amenities, universal access, et cetera. And whereas, the main focus of the master plan is to enhance the available space on the Lynn Common to adequately host major events and activities. This overall cost and fiscal budget constraints prevents the city from proceeding forward with implementation as one project. And whereas, the project was instead viewed as a series of phases to be implemented over time by priority as fiscal resources were available, with the intention of securing grant funding when and if available to assist in this effort. And whereas, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs is offering reimbursable grants to cities and towns to support the preservation and restoration of urban parks through the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities grant program. And whereas, Phase III of the Lynn Common Restoration Project will cost a total of $580,000, and the city has allocated $580,000 in community development block grant funds for Phase III of the Lynn Common Restoration Project. Now, therefore be it, that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to file and accept grants from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Office of Economic and Development, Community Development, and that this resolution shall take effect upon passage. That's it. And we need the emergency.
No, there's more.
Oh, there's more. Oh, I did that one.
You did it?
I did it second. Yep.
Okay, whereas she's done it, and whereas we've had a motion, and whereas it's been seconded, is there a discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubin?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh Absen. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Net, was there an emergency on those transfers?
Yes, Mr. President. All emergency was approved by the committee and make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubin?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh Absen. Counsel Seer?
Yes. Licensing. Counsel Hogan, you're a chair of our licen-- oh, no, I'm sorry, Brian Field.
Thank you, Mr.--
Counsel Field, you're a chair of our licensing.
I'm the chair tonight. Thank you. Mr. President, unanimous consent of the committee, motion to approve.
Motion made.
To approve.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Public properties, Counsel Staubin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Four items on the agenda. The first, for the approval of public arts display on the corner of Mount Vernon Exchange Street, was tabled. We did have some property transfers, the first being to authorize the mayor to convey the deed of a 1,443-square-foot lot on Anchor Road to Robert and Jean Marie Lemieux of 55 Anchor Road for the sum of $4,300, and the approval of Counsel Lozzi. Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Do we need to read them?
Do they have to be read?
Read them.
Order that the city of Lynn convey to D. Richard Lemieux and Jean Marie Lemieux of 55 Anchor Road Lynn, Mass., the parcel of land located at Anchor Road, shown as parcel two in the abandonment plan prepared by the city of Lynn, Anchor Road by Reed Land Surveyors, 365 Chadon Street Lynn, dated April 19, 2019, consisting of approximately 1,443 plus or minus square feet for the consideration of $4,300. Said parcel shall be conveyed with the restrictions that no building shall be constructed upon it, and said land will be used for landscaping and/or parking purposes only. Said parcel shall be merged with the property located at 55 Anchor Road Lynn, Mass. Further order that the mayor is authorized to execute a deed and all documents required by the law department to effectuate the above referenced conveyance.
Read them all.
Also order that the city of Lynn convey to Tyler O. Casey and Christopher D. Sumner of 60 Anchor Road, the parcel of land located at Anchor Road Lynn, Mass., shown as parcel one in an abandonment plan prepared by the city of Lynn, Anchor Road by Reed Land Surveyors in Lynn, Massachusetts, dated April 19, 2019, consisting of approximately 2,407 plus minus square feet for the consideration of $4,400. Said parcel shall be conveyed with the restrictions that no building shall be constructed upon it, and that said land will be used for landscaping and/or parking purposes only. Said parcel shall be merged with the property located at 60 Anchor Road Lynn, Mass. Further order that the mayor is authorized to execute a deed and all documents required by the law department to effectuate the above conveyance. That's it. That's good.